Let's stand for the pledge in a moment of silence, please. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Rushton?
Present.
Commissioner Bailey?
Here.
Chairman Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Sodas Little?
Here.
Commissioner Alguire?
Here.
Commissioner Lautner?
Present.
Thank you. It seems like we've just got out of here.
Yes.
Thank you for coming today. We have a special meeting with two items on the agenda, but we, at this time, would love to hear public comment if anybody would like to make it. Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jennifer Brans. I want to start off by saying I had the privilege of starting the week out this week at the UCOA conference that focused on professional development and leadership with Jennifer Lager from the Grow Professional Development Group and Carly Craig from the MSU Extension. One thing that I focused, that I focused on was we can help our employees in our offices that are struggling. I could go into great detail, but ultimately come alongside the employee and ask questions like, how can I help you make your job easier? How can I make you understand this task better? And listen and work together and make those changes. Another thing that was explored is there is an ultimate goal everyone is working towards. How I get to that goal may be different than how the next person gets to that goal. Doesn't mean my way is right or wrong, or their way is right or wrong, but we have the ultimate goal in the end. Some things I learned were refreshing and I was able to bring some things back that I want to use in my office. In this situation of deciding to transfer duties from the administrator to the clerk, I think the ultimate goal is to make our human resource and finance department successful. I think these two departments are necessary in an organization as large as this, and I think there was a level of comfort brought to most of the employees since the creation of these two departments. On Wednesday, you were fortunate enough to hear from Jared Christine and the ladies that used to be in the accounting, and they all went to strive for the ultimate goal of these departments' success. I felt a lot of emotions. The things I heard from listening to Wednesday's meeting, they need help, they want to work together, they need the information to do the job, they need access to the tools to do their jobs. Please, listen to these employees. You're key players. Come alongside them and give them the tools they need, and most importantly, they are capable of doing their job with collaboration and the right tools. The circumstances that this all took place, probably wasn't the best way to handle things. I'm guessing someone listened to an employee or employees and heard there needed to be a change for the betterment of the employee and the county. I do know this was the first time the board listened and took action without the knowledge of an elected official. In 2019, the board cut a half-time employee in the register needs office without the knowledge of the elected official, and the elected official was not consulted or asked what the needs of the office were. This idea came from somewhere. Minds were already made up when the elected official tried to fight not to lose the employee. When I took office, I had to continue to fight to get this employee back. I thought, how can I create a better working relationship with the board so they feel comfortable asking my opinion and needs on the things that affect my office and not take the ideas of others that know nothing about my office? My first step was to invite you all in and see what we do. Meet the employees, see how busy we are. I am still thankful for those that did come in and learn about our office. I had a nice conversation with Ty and told him some of the things, some of the exact things about listening and talking to your employees. See what they need to be successful. Ty invited the employees to come in today and give public comment, and subsequently took time yesterday for those that wanted to privately meet with him. Thank you for hearing me, Ty. I heard Jared indicate that John's plan, he likes John's plan, and how his office will work to get him where they need to be, the ultimate goal. The treasurer's plan to come alongside the employees gives them benchmarks and gets them the tools they need to be successful. I could hear a level of comfort coming from his voice with this plan. I was unclear to how the clerk's proposal and how her department will come alongside the employees to help them to get the information that is being asked for. Maybe today there's been a new plan being presented, I don't know that. I know now, I have known the clerk for thirty-plus or minus years. I admire her years of service to the people who are coming. I'm not a fan of how things took place, but it's in the past and we have to move forward to reach, solve, to grow. I appreciate all of you on this board and the willingness to serve the public. The tough decisions you have to make aren't always popular with everyone. There is always going to be someone that isn't going to be happy if it's a tough job. You heard your key players tell you exactly what will work for them to be successful: collaboration, communication, tools, access to the important information they need, and most importantly, the work as a team. So the ultimate goal can be reached for the betterment of the whole county. Thank you again for asking for feedback, listening, and for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Chairman. I'm not sure that it's being livestreamed currently. I don't know whether you want to stop and wait till that's addressed, or...
You're not sure what?
I'm not sure that the livestream for YouTube is working.
Okay, let's take just a quick break and see how they'll fix that.
Because that is what the employees just told me.
Okay, anybody else like to make public comment? Yes.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Miwetj, thank you, Board of Commissioners, for providing me the opportunity to speak today. I'm a constituent of District Two. My name is Kier Davis. I'm a tribal citizen of Grand Rapids, Alabama, Ottawa and Chippewa Indians, and I sit on the G2E's Natural Resources and Environmental Committee as an elected official. Ms. Rushton, Miwetj, thank you for acknowledging the treatment of staff in Wednesday's meeting. I would also like to include Ms. Pracker, as I've heard in the community as well that she was notified of changes abruptly. I definitely do my research. Regardless, this is all in the past. As a tribal citizen, a person who believes our tradition should look seven generations to come. With this in mind, I'm worried about our county's government. I was in shell shock to learn you have now established, just now, separation of power, checks and balances, and a county's government where we, the people, can trust you. Thank you for starting the process, and please take a chance to look at your neighboring counties, your tribal governments, your state government. It's a bit shocking that we did not have a finance and a human resources department four years ago. It came in the same staff that truly are wanting to work and do their jobs in a place where we can't find housing, and there's a staffing crisis. Please, look just one generation ahead, look weeks ahead. How long are these people going to tolerate this type of environment without structure, checks and balances, and training? We came in here hearing this is all about training. One plan was provided, one proposal, as a plan was being asked for by the clerk, with all due respect, but this provided a proposal which gave a lot of power to one person. All of this stuff in the meeting turned into who holds the power to hire and fire. I am flabbergasted that this was not already in the hands of human resources or the administrator. Never have I heard of a clerk having that power, and please, public and commissioners, just Google these jobs and see what they're supposed to do in county governments. What is the process for hiring and firing? Is this established, or is this something that also still needs to be done in 2022? It feels like the cart got put before the horse, and the staff are the ones feeling the impact. I support my county as I do my tribal community, and what I have witnessed has left me confused in what the true issue is here. If you are making decisions today with the thought of how these actions will affect people tomorrow, then we really need to look at how this process goes. I apologize to all of you, that change is hard. I know about change, I'm a tribal person, I know about change in this county. I'll leave it there, but there is a need for much needed change in how we treat each other and how we move forward that will be most effective for all that live in this county today and tomorrow. Without those people and without just structure, we may be in trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mikowski?
Good morning. The way things appear to me, we've attended a couple thousand meetings of county and township government the last thirty-four years. The issue, the apparent greedy politics in Leland County government, disrupting the whole building. The opportunity, we don't want to go back, we all want to perform, but we don't want to look back, we don't want to learn from the people we deal with. The healing of politics is necessary. Commissioners must provide appropriate assistance in the actions of the people and raise the level of political awareness. At that time, it appears that four Republican county commissioners, narcissistic egos, initiated the removal of the finance and human resources duties from the county. After a Republican commissioner recall, its crow clothing continued, and it was continued to be approved by the county council. The crow clothing scheme was initiated in the absence of any reports demonstrating need necessity justification for moving. The scheme apparently owes finger evidence, but a treasurer initiated an investigation of the clerk and the state police, but seeming to borrow from other jurisdictions. All of this seeming on plan to occur in the clerk's busiest, most demanding time in elections, all year long. Many commissioners deem such conduct and behavior as charitable. Maybe Almighty help us if the next commission continues such harmful move of suffering. Perhaps commissioners feel that their actions through this process were decent, ethical, good, honest, honorable, just moral, righteous, or perhaps, in the view of conduct as described as bad, dark, evil, immoral, rotten, malicious, sinful, unjust. For me and many others, unless more information is presented by the board commissioners, simply using words such as flawed and ill reasons may describe the harm and damage to the government of the government and the common clerk, taxpayers of the state. That's an appropriate term perhaps. Though this board of commissioners required a new administrator to continue this crow clothing process, the board of commissioners' saving race is an immediate sincere apology to the clerk and taxpayers. Since action will provide the returning to the minister in more positive sense. Hopefully, in 2023, 2024, board commissioners will have the more positive paradigm, complete and halt of the clerk rewarding sloppy governance of the city.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes. Laurel.
I purposely didn't speak during Wednesday's meeting, however, I do want to thank all of you for encouraging us to come forward with our thoughts and our cares. I fully support the current structure of the separate finance and HR departments, and I would encourage you also to please approve the treasurer's plan, which was well thought out and embraces a more team-like approach. We need positive leadership to guide our new employees forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? And then you, Trudy. Good morning, Karen.
Good morning. I'm here to receive this big of township. I was about to come out and speak this morning. I actually feel quite emotional. As a past county employee for DeKalb County, an employee at the Burlington County's government, I feel for the employees who have encouraged, come up and speak. It is tough to work under a circumstance where you just feel you could be doing a better job, and I just want, I don't know, I wish I knew all the employees, I don't, but I just want to give you all a pat on the back and say thank you for your courage, no matter what, how you felt about it, I think it's really important for everyone to hear. But again, as a former employee, current employee, I do believe that good business practices require a separate finance department and HR department from the clerk's office. The clerk's office is way too busy for a low responsibility. So again, thank you for, I wish this had taken so alder and wine, but I'm happy to see the results of what's happened. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you. It's Trudy.
Morning, Trudy Callen. Why don't you just make a few comments on your item number one today? When I started here a few years ago, I had many projects that I had to do in, of course, there was a big learning curve, and I remember after one year talking to an employee in a Jason office and saying, I'm so frustrated, there was so much to learn, and I've been here a year already, and she told me, give it time, you're learning every single day, and you don't understand how much you have already learned, but one of these days it's just going to click and everything's going to be great. And she was perfect. You have a dilemma today, two proposals in front of you. If you remove the stipend one and just look at the proposals, you have what I'm going to call a team approach, an approach to work together across different offices, try to get this resolved, and then you have an approach which shifts these current positions, these new positions, other than elected officials with supervisory and disciplinary action, what's best for the employees, what do they need. When I started, I needed guidance and I needed direction, and I firmly believe that those two things empower the employees to move their position, to understand their role, and to just become better employees as they move forward. And I think that is just really, really important. I have lots that did a good job training me, gave me that guidance, that direction, explained my role, but also gave me the freedom to, you know, make some mistakes and learn from those mistakes as well. And I think it worked out pretty well because eventually it clicked and I was off and running. With regards to the stipends, that's your choice. What I would respectfully request is that you look at this fairly across the board. You have offices, you have been doing tasks and have taken on tasks in other offices over the years, and I cannot think of any times where there's been additional pay or stipends that have been discussed. So I would ask that you look at that in respect to all of those situations and all of those departments who are handling the work. Many of them are, or should say many, some of them are not elected officials who are not going to sit here and say, I'll do the work, but it will come at this price and under these terms. They're not elected, you direct us to do something, and we tell you, okay, what's the timeline, we need to be done. So I would just ask that with regards to stipends, you look at that fairly across the board. While this issue may not impact my office directly, it does affect all of us in this board. And I hope that you can come together for a solution that's best for the new employees, it works, and we can just move forward. I am also supportive of both of these new departments, I want to make sure that I say that before I finish, I'm supportive of both of these new departments. I happen to be one of the employees that was here when we had a finance director years ago, and it helped, it worked pretty well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, there's a seat.
Dorothy Weaver, thank you for considering the plan to train and provide the tools necessary for the finance director and accounting staff to be successful. The single greatest achievement any company can get is organizational health. An organization has integrity, is healthy, when it's whole, consistent, and complete, when its management, operations, strategies, and culture fit together and make sense. A healthy organization has no politics and confusion, high degrees of morale and productivity, and a very low turnover among its employees. An organization that is healthy will inevitably get smarter over time. When leaders of an organization are less than honest with one another, when they put the needs of their departments or careers ahead of the needs of the greater organization, when they are misaligned, confused, and inconsistent about what's important, they create real anguish for real human beings, and they experience that anguish themselves, and that's what we have here. You have been presented with a proposal from the clerk and a plan from the treasurer. One speaks of stipends and demand, while the other addresses unity and teamwork. When considering how to move forward with the training for the finance director and accounting staff, I would ask you to approve a plan that would involve everyone. This can happen if we build a comprehensive leadership team who is responsible for achieving the common objectives that we're after. And if we create clarity so we understand the goals and responsibilities and have clear goals and strategies to obtain our goals. And then we need to oversee and take that clarity with the employees. We need to be clear, repeatedly, enthusiastically, and repeatedly make it clear what we expect and reinforce that clarity, develop a simple, consistent system for reviewing the process. We have the opportunity to work together for the greater good of this county. I encourage you to consider a plan that will help us build that organizational health. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Chairman, I have one.
Pardon?
I have one.
Please come forward.
Good morning. Usually we don't sit over here, but this morning, Allison Middleton, Cassie Township, property owner, taxpayer, voter, Leland County employee. I would like to start by saying this morning, this is my personal feeling, that I would like to say, if you want to offer success for the new county staff and finance director, I do urge you to temporarily put their training back under the hood and reapply the staff. It is imperative that the training be consistent with each position to accomplish the goal of the new independent functional finance and accounting department. I believe the Board of Commissioners' goal in separating the duties within the clerk's office was to make these their own separate unit. And as a unit, each function of that unit needs to understand what the other is doing and exactly why. It seems simple enough to say that the wheel does not need to be reinvented, teach whatever we've worked for decades has favored practice, and once we're filled with that knowledge, let those that are in charge make changes as they deem that to be. I am okay with not being on the popular side from when I was here today. It has been made difficult to say quietly over the past year and not voice much more. I'm here to do a job lately, which I am proud and happy to serve with in the county clerk's office. As a taxpayer and supporter of this county, I certainly hope that it can really wish to put things aside and move forward, and at least do the right thing for the new employees which have entered in the less than ideal situation and provide them with the best direction now. This is something not only avoidable, but executed by the Board of Commissioners and Administrator in a rightful manner, and has brought us all here to this meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. McMillan.
Good morning. I'm glad we've gone northward. I wasn't going to speak today, but after listening to the comments today, I just want to recognize what Commissioner Robbins and Commissioner Wessel have done, and that is to tap the brakes on what appeared to be the one fought through the process on Monday. And I think you guys did the right thing, tapped the brakes, listened to the employees, take that feedback on your made decision today. But again, I just want to acknowledge that you guys did establish a process, put it in place, and more importantly, listened to the employees. The past manager, I know I'm receiving that employee feedback, and I know it's positive. So I know it's difficult sometimes to take the word, but you guys are doing the right thing, and I'm going to appreciate that you guys did, and not rushing to the decision on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, Mr. Prince.
Good morning. I think it needs to be mentioned here that I and my staff did not cause this either, but I think we're the ones paying for it. Somehow, we've just been thrown into this situation that has nothing to do with us, but because of past decisions, we're being set up to fail. When I started on my first day, the employees that were supposed to be training the account credits had already had their access removed, and it would be considered an audit finding if they were to help us out. This is a very interesting thing to hear, seeing as our auditors are on board with them training us. Roadblocks have been set up all along the way, preventing us from having this proper training and becoming successful. Does this sound like a place you would want to work? I know for sure that information is being withheld from finance and HR. Information that we need, things like deadlines, reporting, various funds, errors, all of these things have been kept from us, and why does that? We can't ask about things that we don't know exist. Does this sound like a situation you would sign up for? If errors are ever brought to my attention, I'm the last person to find out. The auditors, the newspaper, board members, they've already been notified before it comes to me. Is that how this process should work? Is this the type of work environment that we want for the Leland County employees, especially the ones just starting out? From what I've seen here, this is not a professional work environment, and it's borderline toxic. Too many employees refuse to even have a working relationship together, and some can't stand speaking or being in the same room. We've tried to do our best getting everyone involved and working together, but sometimes it's hard to feel like that's possible. Everyone here tells me the exact same thing, that they want me to be successful, they want our department to be successful. It's the one thing that I've heard over and over again. On Wednesday, I think I voiced what it would take to help us out and to get us to where we need to be, and I don't know if that was heard or not, and I think some people feel like it was just ignored. Is this what I have to look forward to? This is a place you would want to be. I was hired to be a department head and to lead to new staff and the new departments to make changes here, and in less than three months, without proper training, with everything that's been put in front of us, without any real discussion... that's been put in front of us, without any real discussion with me or my staff, the plan is to take it away. Doesn't matter if that's temporary or permanent. This started out as us trying to come up with a plan that should have been in place months ago, a training plan that would introduce new staff members to county government and its financials. Things as simple as running a report out of our accounting system haven't been able to show to my staff for fear of these fictitious audit findings. We've never refused anyone who's wanted to come in and help us out, and we've asked for help. We've been very willing to work with everyone, but that doesn't mean that we're willing to work for them. I thought it was really odd in my first few weeks here that so many people would stop me in the hall and tell me that I was happy, that they were happy I was here. I'm an accountant. Nobody likes to see us around with mine. I was like, why are so many people excited about finance? Little did I know it didn't have to do with the financials. Employees here have been afraid to come forward and say anything for fear of retaliation. Again, we've been willing to work with everyone, but not for them. Remaining an independent department is very important to me and my staff because we have a good idea of what will happen if we lose that independence.
Thank you. Please, please do not thank you. Thank you. But it was deserved, but thank you. Any other public comments? Any Commissioner comments? Yes, Mr. Robbins.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, employees.
Any other Commissioner comment?
Yeah, I'm talking. Oh, I'm sorry. I just, thank you, employees. It's been emotional last 48 hours here. This all started on 5/11/21, and I will always remember that day because I spent eight hours in the seat and out there in a parking spot. I always stopped there after every meeting because that's when I found out my son died that day. And I will share with you, everybody in this building reached out to me, thanked me, and, you know, gave their condolences, except for one department or two people. I'm not going to tell you who they are, but I'm going to move on from there. When I started this, I knew that it would probably be a one term for me, but what I did is for you employees. Some of you trusted me, and it took a lot of work to trust them one by one. And it wasn't until 24 hours ago, I was so damn proud of you people when you lined up to go talk to Mr. Wessel. And I'm proud of Mr. Wessel because he took the time and had the integrity to listen to every one of you. And I got something I'm going to read here that has not been included. It came to me the other night in an email. It says, "I felt compelled to reach out and ask that you all take the time and watch the meeting that you all had today, yesterday, to really review what has been said and proposed by the clerk and treasurer. I ask that you do this with an open mind as a sense that some commissioners have blinders on, which then clouds your judgment. When has there ever been a time that stipends are paid to train others, and the proposed offered by the clerk is to increase that? Take control and train the way they always have been trained. I heard sinking ships. This is the, this is the problem you created. Fire, fire from the job. Many negative comments from Ms. Crocker. Just this one setting, I read embarrassing comments from Ms. Harsa and how other employees hate them and that people are rude to them, as well as continuation of how the clerk has been wrong, and she needs her name cleared, which shows that there's an overall theme, not what's best for the county, but what's best for them. It was mentioned numerous times today, we are not going to do this for nothing, which shows greed and disrecord with this decision that was set forth by the board. Instead of accepting it, they have worked weekends, overtime for the chief assistant to go over financial records, show mistakes, try to prove a point that they are all the only ones that can do this job. Yet you have two people who left accounting for the Treasurer's Department. Did you ever ask why? Have you ever asked why so many employees have left the clerk's office to jump other offices to work? I think the clerk said she can't keep employees for such low wages, but yet all those people stayed in the county and moved to other offices. Has anyone ever asked why? I know, it's because the work environment. Now, we're all looking at the clerk's office to train new people, demand to have control over everything when they are so hostile to, to the situation. I do commend the employees and the new Financial Director for coming forth and asking for training, actually endorsing the Treasurer's Plan, which includes very culpable clerks who have been doing the job for some time, and the clerk and her staff to help the director at no cost. Sounds like to me it would be a no-win situation, or a win-win situation, opportunity for the clerk and treasurer to show that they can rise above and do what's best for Leonard County. If it does not work, that will be on those elected officials, not the poor employees who have been thrown into this mess. There's so much I could share, but it's not my place. I stay upstairs away from this toxic environment that's been going on for years. Refresh memories, Shelley Roush, former chief, accounting clerk, with the clerk's encouragement and support ran against Treasurer Vicki Killaway. Once the relationship with Roush and the clerk soured, John Gallagher was encouraged to run and support the clerk, and he wins. When that relationship goes sour, Jen Zwick runs for treasurer but loses. Thus, much tension created during this time. After election, Darcy Weaver slips into the Treasurer's office, hence Johanna Novak. Sarah Lautner jumped from accounting to Treasurer's office. See the correlation? It's called dysfunctional, which we want to spread to a piece, excuse me, the office because I feel in some commissioners that they've been wronged. In my days, it's called suck it up, buttercup, move on, but they have not, and by what I see, the commissioners did not listen nor consider any options than the clerk's. Thanks, Ty Wessel, for at least voting to table and ask the elected officials involved to work together with the Financial Director to come up, come together and work together, at least honor what is being requested by the folks doing the job. That's the smart thing to do. Sorry for the rant, but I have worked over here for 30 years and have been my share of, have seen my share of stupid stuff been turned down, but I've always maintained my integrity and worked for the people of Leonard County. I'm embarrassed for the county and the ways people have sabotaged and betrayed the other employees of this county. Please review the Zoom meeting and look with fresh eyes, open in mind, and make a informed decision. Respectfully, Lori Lacrosse, crime victims rights advocate of the Prosecutor's Office of Leonard County.
Win.
If a change is needed in an organization, there are ways to do that and address it. The way this issue was addressed in May of 2021, whenever it was, seems like a long time ago, was pretty reprehensible. It's not the way you make change in an organization. It's not the way you deal with problems. If there is a problem, it's appropriate to bring it up, say that it needs work, study, discussion, but you don't rip someone's job apart while someone's out of town. So that sets the whole situation up to fail. We do need teamwork, and I'm really, really concerned about that. I fail to understand how someone who does not do the job says he can train. I, I don't think we are comparing two equals today. We are comparing a plan to a proposal. A proposal was asked for, not a plan, and perhaps we still have more work to do before we make a decision. These people need to be trained. It should have happened a long time ago. The way this whole thing was done defies any good management at all.
Thank you.
And I'm glad to have heard from everybody. This all should have been done a long, long, long time ago before any changes were made so that we could understand the changes that need to be, needed to happen.
Other Commissioner comments? Patricia and then Rick.
The motion that I made earlier this week had nothing to do with eliminating two departments. It had nothing to do with firing staff. It had to do with training. The rumor mill has been building, creating considerable angst amongst all of you. There's been all kinds of rumors that have come to my ears about firing of staff, taking away authority, eliminating departments, putting them back under the clerk, the clerk has too much power, the clerk doesn't get along with people, two departments never have gotten along, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I know you're hearing the same thing, and I am sorry for that because it's uncomfortable to come to work and to hear those things and wonder, is this true? Is this what's really happening? That's not what my motion was. My motion was to provide training. Now, how did we get there? The clerk would have assisted in a transition plan if that's what the Board of Commissioners wanted way back in May, but as Commissioner Algar just pointed out, that wasn't how things happened. It was tossed out, it was passed, and it moved on. And eventually, because it was passed, the Democrats, although I don't like putting people in boxes, but since we've done that today, the Democrats did agree, and we've been supportive of, of creating two new departments and making them effective despite the, excuse me, the additional costs to taxpayers, et cetera. That's what was wanted, that was what was done, and that was the motion that was passed. The clerk did offer in June to assist with training before our new Finance Director was hired and before the new staff came in. That was rejected. The temporary staff that were there, and we thank Darcy Weaver and Johanna and Sarah Lautner for stepping up and helping and being hired to do that function at the time. When the new staff came in, they could have assisted more with training, but they didn't. They had other jobs to return to. So the new staff sat there, and they are exactly correct. They got no training, except for what the clerk's office was allowed to prevent, present, and it wasn't much because they were told that they were to stay in their own lane and not get involved, which I find incredible. The Treasurer's Plan, quote, "is one that involves everyone," but it didn't involve the clerk when it was created, did it? It was presented here, and the clerk had a heads up, and it had, she had seen it, but she had no involvement in it, and the clerk and the clerk's office are the people that have been doing the budget. So let's come back to what we're really trying to accomplish. It's my understanding that the words that were offensive in terms of the new Director of Finance were changed to reflect supervision and oversight and with full account, of full authority remaining with the county administrator. So what her, her proposal will be, when she gets a chance to provide a plan, is to provide training. The clerk didn't ask for this. She didn't ask, she didn't come to us and say, hey, I want to train this last time. After June, she said, okay, I'll keep my own lane. You don't want me. We asked her, what would it take for you to agree after all this that's transpired, including being accused of committing a crime? What will this take for you to agree to do the training so that the finance people can be successful and have the guidance, know the policy, and do the best possible job? She responded with that proposal. We didn't ask her for a plan. The Treasurer's Plan pops up, and I applaud him for putting something together, even if it didn't involve the clerk. And now we have a competitive situation where we've got a plan and a proposal that we asked for. We couldn't discuss just the proposal because the plan was there, and now the employees are even more upset. Now, I'm glad that Commissioner Wessel gave you an opportunity yesterday and this morning to, to air your concerns because that is important. And I agree with Commissioner Algar, that should have happened a long time ago. And I agree that this process should never have reached this level, but it has, and it's where we are. I will say again, I think the clerk will come up with a plan that assesses the needs of what our new director and staff require, will work in concert with everybody, and will provide the training necessary. She is not about firing anybody. She's not about taking anybody's job. She's about training. And I am so sorry that we are where we are today and that she has had to put up with, and you have had to put up with, the dissent that's gone on. So I, I will make my motion with the modifications that the clerk talked about with our county administrator so that it is more appealing, but it was never her intent to do the other, and I know that from discussion with her. Thank you for coming today, and thank you for speaking up, and I hope this isn't the end of your speaking up on issues and letting us know how you feel.
Commissioner Rushton?
Yes, I hear him talking, but I still hear people not listening, unfortunately. On page two of the proposal from the Treasurer's Office specifically says, and I will quote, "Assistance from the clerk will be imperative for the continued training of management, financial, and other organizational reporting. Further assistance is required from the clerk in granting the Finance Director, the administrator writes, for the Harris software and for the accounting drive to be opened for all users. Consistent communication and collaboration among financial departments will be key in supporting the successful implementation of a systematic process and financial procedure refinements for continuous improvement and growth as a financial whole." So.
Thank you.
Where, did, did the clerk bring a plan for us today?
Did we ask for one for today?
She had made the comment.
Let's deal with that when we get to the agenda item.
Okay.
Any other pub, or Commissioner comment? Yes, Mr. Robbins.
One more. I went back and reviewed some of the meetings over the last year and a half, and some of the commissioners here that are pushing the one plan. I remember in the beginning, have we talked to the employees? Have we listened to the employees? That was over a year ago, and we did. Maybe it was a little later in the program, but it happened in the last 48 hours, and the employees have spoken, just like our constituents speak, and we need to listen to them. We need to back them. I mean, the best speech this morning was Jared himself. He told the story, what's been going on. The only apology I owe, Mr. McCauskey. The only apology I owe Mr. Mikowski is to the employees here that this has gone on that long, and that's the apology I'm making today is to the employees, that I'm sorry it's taken this long. I was told in the beginning of this by another commissioner who no longer sits here. I was only on the board for five months, and when this motion was made, and he approached me, and I was taken back by it, because this commissioner had been around for a long time. Said, I didn't realize there was a problem in that building. And I looked at him, and it's like, how could you not see it? So I'm hoping that there is an alternate plan today, and we can move forward. And like I said, the employees have spoken. That's what you asked Commissioner Alguer a year ago, that we need to hear from the employees, they have spoken, and we need to listen and move forward. Thank you.
Other Commissioner comments?
I'm going to save my Commissioner comment to introduce the first agenda item. So we'll move to our agenda. We have two purposes of our meeting today, and the first item on the agenda is a Finance Department update proposal, and we have a motion on the table. But I would like to share what I heard after talking to 30, 32 different staff people since last Wednesday's meeting, after receiving emails, and after reaching out to Michelle, Jared, and John. First of all, I did send to John, Jared, and Michelle six questions, and I gave these questions because it was important for me to know their answer in order to guide my vote today. First question was, will you support the administrator's recommendation and make it work? Yes or no? Will you commit to full and active participation in weekly meetings as spelled out in Benchmark Five? Yes or no? Will you attempt to demonstrate to staff and Board of Commissioners that you are each willing to support each other and ensure accomplishment of the eight benchmarks? Yes or no? Will you commit to doing whatever you can to diffuse staff alliances and move us forward? Yes or no? Will you direct your staff to full cooperation? Yes or no? And will you trust that we can effectively accomplish the charge spelled out in the Board of Commissioner resolution authorizing the creation of Finance and HR positions? I heard back from two of the three people. I have not yet received the response from Michelle. She had election training all day. But I did hear from Jared and John, yes to all of those questions. Those were important questions to me. Then I reached out to Chad, and I asked him if he would invite staff to meet with me. I was a little scared to do that, because they'd been watching us for 18 months. But I need to tell you that I really enjoyed the meetings with the staff. And they were short, they were brief, because I only had two and a half hours to do it, and came back early this morning and did a couple more. What I heard consistently, consistently, was much pride and commitment, much pride and commitment. But I also heard concern. Almost consistently, I heard concern. I had heard concern about teamwork. I heard concern about access and information flow. Almost without success, almost without exception, I heard support for two new departments. Almost without exception, I heard support for the two new departments, the two new positions, HR and Finance. Clearly, support for that. Almost without support, I heard concern from staff that they felt like Board of Commissioners didn't always know what was really going on, that we weren't very well informed. We talk amongst ourselves, but we don't talk with staff. I heard that, and I had to pick for that, because nobody came in and scolded. Everybody was so polite and so proud to be here. I heard a lot of concern, but also a lot of praise from Michelle Crocker. I heard, I heard comment after comment after comment about her service and how much she's done, and Jen, for her service and how much she's done. Without exception, I heard that. There was not one person that bashed our clerk or our deputy clerk, not one person. But neither did I hear much support for the clerk's office doing the training of the Finance Department. They need to be involved. We need assistance. But there was not much support for the proposal we received from the clerk. I heard quite a bit of concern about trust issues, and I heard lots of concern about sometimes it's really hard to get information. And I heard some concerns about passwords, and I can't, I have to wait for days to get what I need to get. Why is it so tight? I heard some concern from some departments, and they weren't all department heads, and they weren't all elected officials. They were across-the-board people. But I heard concern about, we have responsibility to do a job, but we don't have the authority to do it. We're having trouble doing our job because we don't have the tools we need to do the job. So I want to tell you that I left here last night, and I was very appreciative of the staff that met with me, and those that didn't meet that sent me something. I know that some of my Commissioner colleagues didn't approve of the way I went about it. I'm not going to support the motion that's on the table, and I am not, so I wanted to introduce that, because we had a motion on the table, and we can continue to debate that motion if we want, but I wanted to make sure you knew that I have decided I cannot support the motion that's on the table, and I would like to see if our administrator has a different plan. But there is a motion on the table, so we'll either have to withdraw the motion or call a question.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear a motion on the table. Who made the motion?
Patricia on Wednesday.
It was tabled on Wednesday.
It was, oh, and you put it back on the table? Okay, now I'm following you. I had realized that you had put it back on the table.
Could you read the motion, and then we'll see what we want to do with that, Allison?
Here, I've got it if you need.
That would be great.
Would you read it, Patricia?
I'll give it to Allison, so she has it. Thank you. The motion on the table is, I move that the Lillina County Board of Commissioners approve and adopt the Lillina County Clerk Michelle Crocker's proposal in total as outlined in her email to County Administrator Chet Janik on October 18th, and that the details outlined in the proposal be read into the minutes.
That has been moved. And second, if you want to speak to it again, Patricia?
Well, I want to raise the question. It's my understanding, and this is addressing our county administrator, Chet, it's my understanding from Michelle that the two of you met and changed the wording on the first statement and also on the stipend.
That's not completely accurate. I gave Michelle a revised proposal that I drafted based on the comments, that I gave it to her. I have not had a response from her whether she would accept it or not, and I do not have a revised proposal. I privately gave her my thoughts, took her wording, and put my words in it, but I don't feel comfortable speaking on her behalf. If you wish, I can tell you what I suggested to her, but even that, I don't feel comfortable because I gave it to her as my suggestions on how we can maybe go forward with this plan, but I have not had a response from her.
It was, in speaking with her yesterday, I thought that she was in agreement with you. Mr. Chairman, could we take a five-minute break and check with our clerk? I don't, if there's a motion needed, an amendment to the motion needed, I think we ought to have it and not proceed with what I made unless it's accurate. So if we could take a five-minute break, and let's contact.
If our clerk is listening, she'll probably come in.
I don't know if she is listening.
Let's take a break and invite her to come in.
Yes, please.
If we'd like to do that.
A memo, and I suggest we all read that, and then I saw Patricia's handup.
Just want to clarify, what you're getting there is revised from the clerk's office. It is not a proposal that she and I agreed to, nor is it my original proposal to her. So what you have is the terms that the clerk modified, okay? And if you want, I can address that after you have a chance to read it.
Mr. Janik, is the red what you gave her?
The red is part of what I gave her that she agreed to, is what she told me just a few minutes ago. It's not completely what I gave her.
Okay.
But I can address that if you wish.
I'm not sure that I even know what we got, because the administrator put forward something and then a draft of something, and now this. So I'd ask the administrator to give us background if we can.
Yeah, and at some point today, I'd like to give you my overview and perspective of the entire process, because a lot of things have been said, and I've been pretty silent, trying to find common ground, but once you vote, I will share some stuff with you. So what I gave yesterday to Michelle privately was my suggestions that I thought may help find common ground. I gave it to her yesterday morning privately, just thinking, Michelle, at least think about this, because I know what the concerns are. I did give it to her. I talked to her several times. She did have training yesterday, so I know it was a busy day. I set up a meeting for her, the treasurer, and our Finance Director to meet together to hopefully find common ground. My goal was the four of us could come here to the table and present a unified course. We were not able to meet because the clerk had training all day, she said, which I know she had trained, it was a very busy day. So we did really try to meet, we know your suggestion, and I was hoping that we all could come to the table to revise proposal, but unfortunately, that did not happen. So I did meet with the treasurer and the Finance Director. We reviewed Mr. Wessel's six points. We actually were meeting the second your email came to us. So I actually read that, and you responded, and two of them responded back to you in my office. I asked them all directly, can they agree to your six points? And they said yes. I talked to Michelle, and she said, she said, training and could not meet. So I took her proposal, and I made what I thought were some potential points that may help the situation. And so let me review my proposal. There are some things she, I guess, has accepted. Until a few minutes ago, I did not know where she stood with this. She and I talked last night around nine o'clock. She asked me if I could email it. I gave her a hard copy yesterday morning around nine o'clock last night. I actually called her to see where we were. She called me first, I returned her call, and she asked me if I could email her the word version that she would consider making some changes. So until Commissioner, so it's little mentioned, I had no talk, I did not know she was agreement with any of this stuff. So let me just review what I proposed. Some she has agreed with, some she has not. Once again, I feel very uncomfortable speaking on behalf of the clerk, but she has chosen not to come to this meeting. So the biggest thing is about the supervision of the staff, and based on the legal opinion that Mr. Wessel and I got from our corporate counsel the other day, at any time, first of all, the resolution that you passed in October of 2021 is in fact, nothing you're doing here is counter to that. It's how the process is followed through. So at any time, in that resolution, you gave the full authority to the administrator to implement the plan, hire the people, set up the structure. That is still ongoing. And at any time, the administrator has the right to void any parts of Michelle's proposal. That could be changed by the Board, but because of the resolution you passed, the administrator ultimately has authority at any point to say, this is not working, we're stopping it. Even if you vote right now to approve her original proposal, the administrator has the right to void that out. You could override that, but that's a separate issue. So I proposed to her that, and I won't read the whole thing, because you have seen it, that any supervisory changes or discipline determination could only occur after consultation and approval of the administrator. So the administrator will still have final authority on any actions.
Are you reading from her proposal right now?
I'm reading from what I proposed to her, giving you a little background.
Okay.
Okay? That, it appears, from what we've just passed out, that she has agreed to. Okay, number two, her request for legal costs for the county clerk. I modify that to say for any county government-related accusations. Her proposal does not state that, and I just have to protect the interest of the county. I put that in there, that it'll only be valid under county government-related accusations, which is by law, you have to do anyway for any elected official. So in my opinion, that's a critical part that protects the county and also protects her or any elected official. By law, if any elected official is accused of legal issues, that elected official has to go to the prosecutor first and ask for legal assistance. Prosecutor can say yes or no. If the prosecutor says no, the elected official has the option to come to the Board, ask for legal assistance, financial help to cover their cost, and the Board can say yes or no. If the Board says no, the elected official has the right to go to court and demand it, and if there's legitimate cause, the courts most time have approved that cost. Most time, the county boards have approved this cost also.
I have a question on this. Paid legal costs, you're talking about the legal coverage for the elected. Does that extend to the departments and the employees within those departments?
Yeah, it's a different process, because if you're elected versus department.
Okay, but also.
That was something the administrator and the Board would have to determine, but yes, they are covered.
They're already covered as well.
Yeah, it's a little different for an elected official, but yeah. So my proposal will simply add the word county government-related accusations. She has not agreed to that.
Yeah, I have just a commoner kind of question on the legal side, too. I think if, as was the case when the criminal charge was brought against her, proposed that was filed by.
Well, actually, there was no criminal charges, there was allegations.
Allegations, yes.
Yeah, so I'm clear of that.
Good choice of words, thank you. When the allegations were filed, it was filed by the county, so the county then was, would have been, could not represent her, if I understood right, in that particular case.
Yeah, I'm not a legal expert, but I.
We were already on there.
I assume that would have been.
Would have been conflict of interest.
But there was no criminal charges.
No, it wasn't. It was allegation. Thank you.
So my recommendation was that she add the word county government-related accusations. She appears that she has not agreed to that term, because it's not, she did not make that change. In terms of the stipend, I tried to find common ground. I reduced it from 250 to 175 for clarification purpose, but she is getting currently stipend $75. So I want to clarify, it wasn't 250 plus the 75. And I put in there that it be paid at the end of the training period, where it takes two months or four months, do the training, and then get paid at the end of a successful thing. She will not agree to that. Her position, it has to be that amount every paid period. So she is not agreeing to that terms for herself or the chief deputy clerk.
And also, the 175 a week, making it clear that it is, she's already getting the 75. So I would add those two. I'm not sure why the county clerk did not agree to the wording of county-related under the legal portion. I suspect it might have related to what she went through earlier this year. I'm not, or last year, I'm not sure. I'm just not sure why she didn't do that, so we'll leave it as she has it. But that would be my modified motion.
So it's basically a motion to change it so that it's consistent with the latest document that we received from the clerk.
Yes, please.
Everybody comfortable with Patricia making that change to reflect the wording of the clerk's message?
Mr. Chairman, is this an amendment to the original motion?
She asked if she could change the motion. Yes.
So it's an amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll vote on the amendment and then the original?
Yes, right.
Is that the correct procedure?
Yes. We didn't get a second to the amendment, though.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Patricia?
No, I think I've pretty well said what I think. I think her intent is, the clerk's intent is to provide best practice training. It's not to usurp responsibility or authority or to in any way eliminate the departments. It's to get them off on the right path, to provide all the information that they are seeking and should have been provided before now, although probably didn't have a means to do it. So I think this solves the problem, and I think it, you know, I fully understand where Jared would feel the way he does, so would I, but a lot of this is coming from rumors floating around. It's not from what has transpired. So I think this change will hopefully make him feel more comfortable and we'll get the training portion done, and he will be successful in his job, as I'm sure he will be, and I'm sure the staff will be, too.
Thank you. Commissioner Lotner?
So to be clear, this is almost identical to yesterday's. So this would switch it back under the supervision of the clerk. Necessary supervisory and disciplinary determination should have authority after consulting with the administrator. I think, I think that's a little messy myself, but as administrator, maybe Chet knows better how that process would work. That was for the finance director. And then for the account staff positions, it would also move it back under, temporarily back under the clerk, and she would have necessary supervisor and disciplinary determination after consulting with the administrator. I have a real concern, too, with, and I think this is critical, Leland County will pay any, any legal fees for the county clerk or her office, for the attorneys of her choice, for any accusations, allegation, complaint, and charges alleged or sought after her or the office of the clerk. That is wide open, wide open. And I know there's some pretty darned expensive attorneys out there. I know, as Patricia said, something that happened earlier this year, and then I think if that goes to the allegation, that was county-related. So that would be, I would, that's, I think, to have put the county government in there was, is the only logical thing to watch, to have that process. So then the clerk would get $175 a week stipend. It is meritorious, we don't want to forget that. And the deputy clerk would get $250 a week stipend. That remains in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions before we go back to Deb? I think you spoke once, didn't you, Deb? Go ahead, you're on.
I did not. I see very little change in this. I still see the direct supervision of not only the department head, but the staff. Why is it that the department head does not have supervision over his own staff? Why is that? Again, you're taking away from him the ability to perform as a director. That's the least, is the staff. And why does one director have to be over another elected official when Chet is the one that's supposed to oversee his department?
Department head.
I have a problem with that. As Melinda mentioned, the legal language on this, broad, very broad. I hope the taxpayers like showing out money because you'll be on the hook for everything. Any accusation, any allegation, any complaints or charges alleged, broad. She's already got legal coverage. And the stipend, Trudy Gallagher sat here and told us, many of our employees, over the course of years, have stepped up to the plate. They have trained, they've taken on duties from other offices, and I can go on and on over the years with no stipend. So if you start paying stipends for training, because that's all it should be, is training, how are you going to, how are you going to rectify what's gone on in history when those employees or department heads never were compensated? This is just a rehash of yesterday.
Thank you.
Doesn't do much for me.
Patricia, are you done? Excuse me. You're done?
I am. Thank you for asking.
Patricia?
Addressing just a couple of points that she raised. Commissioner Rushton, this supervision, and that relates to training. It doesn't relate to whatever else our finance director is doing in relationship to the administrator. It's talking about training. And in terms of the concern over the legal costs, offer an amendment. If you don't, if you think it's too broad, offer an amendment. I don't hear anybody offering amendment, just pointing out that it's a bad thing. In terms, in terms of the stipend, this is not something that's going to happen without a lot of work. In fact, I was amazed that the treasurer's proposal didn't have any request for support in some capacity and that they could do this during an eight-hour day, which says, are you overstaffed if you consume a large assignment like this? But I do, did see that he was suggesting that the clerk's office do a part of that. I don't think we'd ask anybody to take on a major responsibility without training. We certainly don't do that with any consultant, whether we brought them in for training programs or whatever, when it's a major thing that is not part of their job responsibility, in fact, was taken away. Why are we loath to pay a small amount for training? So I support her request for training. I would support that request for anybody. I think one of the things that I've heard said by staff before is, if I don't do it, I have to do it. It's my job. I'm not an elected official. Elected official doesn't have to do that. So, and we shouldn't be requiring that of anybody without compensation. Historically, I don't know how we go back and pay everybody. I don't think that's, that's something that really fits with this right now.
I don't want to cut anybody off, but I suspect minds are made up, and at some point we need to move forward. But Commissioner Lotner, you had your hand up, and then Commissioner Alguayer, you had your hand up.
Well, I just, I forgot that we wanted to mention earlier that this does not say anything about training, period. We still don't have a training plan, so there's no training. And someone said it earlier this morning, we have to listen. We've heard a lot, and we have to listen. Thank you. Bye.
Gwen?
So I mentioned this before, but I hear two problems. I hear a teamwork management issue that needs to be addressed. You guys have concerns, and that's important. We have a responsibility to maintain an accurate budget, to take care of our citizens' finances. That is our mandate. That's not about teamwork. That's a whole different issue. The training, we have allowed training to be supposedly done not by the people who did the job previously, and what I'm hearing from the employees is, we need help. For a short time, it's our responsibility to make sure the employees taking care of our people's money know how to do it, and they want to know how to do it. Of course you do. Nobody likes not feeling like you can do your job. So for a short period, our job is to train. I've, we've tried every other way. We've tried not having the people who used to do the job do the training. It's obviously not worked. For a temporary period, the people who performed the tasks should train new people to do the task, and then you're on your own, your own department. I hope you would not take that personally. We have to take care of the citizens' tax money. It's got to be done accurately. You've brought up a real teamwork issue that we need to, that this, that needs to be addressed. We haven't heard a plan. I imagine the people who did the work, we could table this whole thing once more and hear what the plan is, but the people who did the job would know how to train new people to do it. I don't see, and we've tried other things. I don't see another way to make sure that our tax dollars are administered the way they need to be. This is temporary, period. It's just temporary.
Before we go to Deb and then Rick, I just want to clarify, just as a plan, with benchmarks
and goals, that the auditor, the clerk, the treasurer have agreed to in their heart.
Which one is that?
The one I presented last month verbally to the board and to the finance committee, and I put in writing October 18. This is a special development plan that, like I said, the auditor, the clerk, the treasurer, finance director all agree. Each one privately and as a group agreed to the plan. So we do have a plan. What you have, then, is the conditions from the clerk for her involvement with the plan.
Right.
Because she said there were conditions involved. That's why she came up with this memo. I asked her, okay, if you agree with the plan, what are your conditions? And she said there are conditions. I asked them, I asked her to put it in writing because we need to have clarification. Mr. Gallagher, on his own, informed Mr. Wessel and I that he has a plan that is in line with everything in the goals and objectives. I specifically asked him, it's his plan, does he agree with my eight benchmarks? And he said yes. So I just want to clarify that. We do have a plan in place. It was my responsibility. It's not the board's decision how the plan is implemented. You have the right to deal with it, but this is what I call a professional development plan. It's the same thing I shared with you a month ago, six weeks ago at a finance committee meeting, and last month's meeting. I just put it in writing now. I want to make clear, there is no disagreement on how we're going to proceed. These are measurable benchmarks. Each one of them can be measured in March or April or February. Are we making, are we achieving these benchmarks? Yes or no? So there is a plan in place. What you have is the conditions of what the clerk will participate in, and then a more probably detailed procedure on how this plan will be implemented from the treasurer.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Rushton?
I just want to say, you know, sometimes we always get stuck, and we don't think outside the box. And with that said, we always have the opportunity to bring in Reiman and have him work with our finance director if Michelle refuses to assist. That's an option that we have. We can rescind the audit contract, go with a different auditor at the end of the year because I understand that's a conflict for him, but he is as well as knowledgeable about the nuances of what goes on in our books. So we do have options.
And I did ask the administrator, depending on the outcome of our vote, he does have other options to talk about. Commissioner Rushton?
Robbins.
Robbins?
We'll help you today, Ty.
We do have a plan. I agree with Gwen. We need a plan. And I look at it as, I use Mr. Janik as the example. He's going to build a house. He's asked two builders to put in a plan. Or he has a plan, but two builders approached him on how they're going to build a house. One person over here gave him his plan, how to build the house. I was hoping that our clerk would show up. She's had, you know, John's proposal came in at, what, 4:49 on Monday. The clerk's had time. She has given us a letter of demands, you know, to make Jared, there's a trust issue here on both sides, and if you want to tone that trust issue down, she should have been here and gave a plan, a detailed plan, how she's going to help Jared, how she's going to help these two girls. But we have not seen anything on paper or anything from her. How's she going to train them? All she's saying is, I will train them with a demand letter. And I'm disappointed that, you know, we could have probably worked this out, maybe. I mean, I go right back to June of '21. I'm negotiable. Anybody knows me, I'm a mediator. I don't have to have everything what I'm asking for. I asked her point blank in a meeting, would you sit down and talk? She said it's never going to happen. And here we are, a year and a half later, and we're in the same boat. But, you know, I agree. Chet, you have a plan, you've done a great job. You've had two builders give their proposal on how they want to build that plan, and we only got one proposal and one letter of demand, and it comes down to a trust issue. Neither side wants to work with, so I'm suggesting that there's a way, there's a plan, but we can do this, but on part of it, we're going to have to go outside.
Okay, I see another hand up, and we can do that, but I think we are beginning to repeat ourselves, so let's be ready to take a vote soon.
I just heard him say, the clerk was asked for a proposal, not a plan.
on paper, or anything from her. How's she going to train them? All she's saying is, I will train them with a demand letter. And I'm disappointed that, you know, we could have probably worked this out, maybe. I mean, I go right back to June of '21. I'm negotiable. Anybody knows me, I'm a mediator. I don't have to have everything what I'm asking for. I asked her point blank in a meeting, would you sit down and talk? She said it's never going to happen. And here we are, a year and a half later, and we're in the same boat. But, you know, I agree. Chad, you have a plan. You've done a great job. You've had two builders give their proposal on how they want to build that plan, and we only got one proposal and one letter of demand, and it comes down to a trust issue. Neither side wants to work with, so I'm suggesting that there's a way, there's a plan, but we can do this. But on part of it, we're going to have to go outside.
Okay, I see another hand up, and we can do that. But I think we are beginning to repeat ourselves. So, let's be ready to take a vote soon.
I just heard him say, the clerk was asked for a proposal, not a plan. I don't understand.
I'm saying she's had since Monday to come up with something that all of us would have felt comfortable with. Jared, the board, everybody in this room.
Mr. Chairman, would you have the administrator review that process again? He created the plan, correct?
Yeah, let me just.
So, you've already created the plan, so that is the plan.
Yeah, the finance committee meeting approximately six weeks ago, we talked about the meeting for a plan. Internally, we've been talking about that, and I'll give you more details. But I came to the finance committee, and we agreed we needed benchmarks and some goals. I developed them. I shared them verbally with the board at the last rubber board meeting. I put them in writing. I gave copies to the treasurer, finance director, the clerk prior to finalizing them, if they had any issues, and the auditor. I met with them separately and as a group, asking, is there anything that's missing in my plan? And that's, once again, the auditor, the clerk, the treasurer, and the finance director. And I think everyone will agree with that, that I asked them, please review it. Am I missing anything? Because I'm not a finance person. But I want to have true benchmarks that we can really measure, so it's not subjective, you know? Because you can have a goal that people can read different ways. I said, is there any benchmarks that are missing? After I drafted that, I called our auditor and said, is there anything that's missing that you see from outside perspective? He said, no. Matter of fact, his firm has the procedures to implement this plan. So, everyone has felt comfortable this is the plan. The clerk said she would do it under certain conditions. I asked her to put those conditions in writing. So, because I didn't want any gray area. There's been enough confusion already. So, I asked her to put her conditions in writing. The treasurer had no conditions. Then he came up with a plan. He notified Mr. Wessel and I, I think a week ago, that he was going to come up. So, we said, sure. We encouraged him. As soon as he got the plan Monday at 4:47 or something, the next day, I shared that with the clerk, because I was a completely honored. Your husband, Don, I, we did not sit down with the treasurer, review this plan. We got it. So, thank you. I gave it to the clerk. I shared it. And then all of you got copies of that with these meetings.
So...
Deb Rushton, and then Gwen, and then I hope somebody calls the question.
Call the question, sir.
I just...
Deb had the floor, so.
Okay.
What I was going to say was, we have a plan. There's a difference in the process of executing the plan, correct?
Yes, I think it's a very fair statement. Yes.
Right.
If you're asking me, yes.
So, we have one that has conditions, and we have one that does not have conditions. However, in one plan, you've got treasurer and treasurer's department, clerk, clerk's department, working together to train. In the other plan, you've got the clerk's department. We've got some talent in the treasurer's department. It would be a shame not to utilize that talent.
Thank you. Gwen, and then Melinda.
So, I think it was mentioned that we could have, did you say Peacock do the training? And I just wonder how much an hour he would charge compared, compared to paying a small stipend to the people who did the job. But we might consider that, that he would be considerably more expensive.
Thank you. Melinda?
Call the question.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. All of you are calling the question?
No.
Hi.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
opposed? Yes. Okay. Now, we have an amendment on the floor we're going to vote on, and let's do a rule call vote.
I think we're all.
We need to know.
Yeah, we need to know what we're voting on here.
Could you help us with that, Allison?
I will certainly try.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, I'm going back to look for the amendment.
Did you have that?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sotis Little?
Yes.
I think somebody had asked that we read the amendment. Do you have that? Just so there's no confusion on what it is.
Do you want me to do it? I do not have a verbatim, but it would be the modification.
The amendment is to modify the original motion to reflect the...
The new memo from the clerk.
Yeah, the document we just received.
Everybody clear on that? Okay, now, let's vote on the amendment then.
Okay. Commissioner Sotis Little?
Yes.
Chairman Wessel?
No.
Commissioner Elgaier?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Lotner?
No.
Commissioner Robbins?
No.
Commissioner Rushton?
No.
Amendment fails.
Now, we have a motion on the floor that is the same as the amendment, but it reflects the demands, the request of the clerk prior.
And I will withdraw that motion, because there's no point in going through it. It won't pass.
Would the second?
Sure.
Then, we have to check to...
All right. I have no notes here, so I'll just speak and say something, because a lot of comments, and just want to clarify some stuff here. So, when, well, when this term began with these commissioners, I verbally told them I would probably submit my retirement. And then I did it last year, so I'd never anticipate this ongoing controversy, and it's unfortunate it happened for everyone, because I truly have enjoyed working with everyone here, including the clerk and so forth. But when the proposal was made in May of '21, I had no knowledge of it. I've tried to work with the past two chairmen and Mr. Robbins to find common ground. We've met numerous times. The staff had virtually no input with me during that whole process. Once the resolution was passed in October of 2021, I think the staff may have felt more empowered, because the board passed that. And I received comments from, almost every department had an elected official at that time, which actually surprised me. I did not solicit it. The vast majority of them were in favor of creating these two new departments. I just want to state that. I can only state, no one told me that prior to that. I think everyone kind of just wanted to see how it played out. The job was posted for the finance director. I know it's going to be very controversial, so I put together a committee of six people to work with me to select that, including our auditor, and including the finance director for Grand Jarvis County, who I have a great deal of respect for. I asked Mrs. Gala to join us in that process, because I have a great deal of respect for her. I asked one of the staff people that's going to impact this to join us in the process. We interviewed two candidates, both who were internally. There were no external candidates. Several expressed interest, but the concern was the politics of the board and how this would play out. And so, we only have two candidates. It was a very difficult choice. I offered the job to one person. I was very honest with her what the concerns were from the staff, because it was split. And the committee was not in agreement on who the next finance director to be. I felt for the success of the program and for that person, I needed to outline what the concerns were and what my expectations were before she said yes or no. She came back and said she would take the job, which I was grateful for. It was a controversial decision, but I felt long-term it would be best for everyone. The three months that she was in the position, it was a challenge for her and for me. And at the end, in April, she decided to resign, which I wish her the best. I had no grudges against her. She could not live by my conditions, and it was not a good partnership. So, I thanked her. I have a lot of respect for her. I still do, and we went forward. I posted a job. We had no applicants. I looked at a couple of consultants, including CPA firms, including people that are retired in the area that had expertise. Couple of them verbally said yes, and then depending what happened between then, they withdrew because of a lot of controversy and what's been in the enterprise. And I think a couple of them may have got phone calls from people here. Anyway, they chose not to participate. I reached out to a couple firms, CPA firms. Yes, if Reiman does it, there had to be a separation of duties if they serve in the director capacity. If they're consulting, it's a different issue. At that time, the board reviewed it again, I think in June or July. Decision was continue to find a finance director. Mr. Prince applied. I put together a small interview team. And then, when he was the finalist, I invited the clerk, the treasurer, and our auditor to join us in that process, along with Mrs. Gala. And Jared did well, and everyone in the room agreed that he had the skills to be our finance director. So, he was hired. I certainly did not anticipate the two accounting clerks transferring to the treasurer's office. That was a major setback. For professional reasons, I understand why they did it, and I'm happy for them, and I congratulate them, because it is advancement for both of them. So, it worked out well. Sarah Lauter has a degree in finance. I told her personally, long-term, that I thought she had the ability to be a finance director here, treasurer at some point. She's a very sharp lady. She also had a baby at the same time. I remember that. We were going through this transition. Fifty percent of our accounting staff was on maternity leave. That made it a challenge. I mean, you can't write this thing up and say, this is how it's going to happen. If everyone wrote this up, people would say, this is too far-fetched. This is beyond. So, Sarah was on maternity leave. Here we are trying to implement a new structure, and we have half the staff on maternity leave. She came back. There was an opening in the treasurer's office. Sarah took it. I encouraged her to apply for it. It was a great opportunity for her. It's more advancement for her. Financially, it was a gain for her, and she's using her accounting degree. Then, there was another opening, because the chief deputy or deputy clerk went to the Suns Bay schools. I found out that, I'm not clerk, treasurer, that's deputy treasurer, had a degree in culinary arts. And she had a chance to go work in her home school district. So, of course, it was a great opportunity for her. So, she took that. So, that meant we had nobody working in the accounting department. I think Darcy came in and did the best that she could under circumstances. Darcy worked in the accounting department. At the same time, she was trying to learn her HR duties, and that was very difficult for her. And she was very stressed out, as we all were. So, I tried to bring some external people in as interim finance directors. They expressed interest at first, then said they were not interested in that. Like I said, the committee fully supported Mr. Prince. He was brought on. We also hired two new accounting clerks that have background in accounting. And I'm convinced they want to learn. But there's a big difference between government accounting and private business accounting. And that has been a challenge for them. And Mr. Prince obviously did a lot of audits, but it's one thing left the big picture versus the day-to-day details. And I'm sure he has the ability to do that. I'm sure our two accounting clerks have the ability to do that. And they just need to know exactly how to get from A to B to C. Once they do, I'm very confident they can complete that task. The clerk's office has been helpful. Overall, I want to think that have not been helpful. We started the budget process. We asked them to be involved, and you'll get an update, our next-gen items, our budget. But it was really refreshing to see Jared and Jen working together and laughing. And, you know, as I mentioned before, Jen has a very unique laugh, and she's not a quiet person. So, when I could be in my office, hear them laughing, working together, that was a good sign. And as you know, during our budget process, they've been working together very well. And we're almost done. And actually, yesterday, Jen, Jared, and I met, reviewed the next coming item, the budget, and we're very close to completing the budget. I think today, we may be able to have our final budget meeting and have one more, once all the books are changed. But we're very close. So, there is working relationships between the Jen and Jared. It has not been perfect. I probably could have, should have done this plan back in July. Looking back, it was a mistake on my part not to do this. I probably naively thought we can get through this with the staff that we had, working together. There's a lot of history here, as you know, between the clerk's office and the treasurer. I'm not going to repeat all that. This year before I got here, I did a survey when I came here. My first three months, the survey results were pretty revealing. I went public with those. You can look at the, oh, probably July 2012 meetings and see those survey results. The entire staff has been frustrated. I encouraged them to come and view and express their views. My background is from an educational system where people don't have a problem speaking. Let's just say that. Been a lot of staff meeting that people go on and on and on. So, I certainly am not opposed to any comments any staff made. I encouraged them to come and speak. I did not tell anyone what to say or what not to say. I had no idea who's going to come speak. When Mr. Wessel called me about having a dialogue with the staff, I encouraged it. Said, yes, that's great. And today, hoping we'll be done by 1 o'clock, I have sent an email to everyone that we're going to have a staff meeting. It's going to be a department head meeting, but I encourage any staff who wants to come, because I want to inform them directly about the new administrator, which I probably would have had a special meeting anyway. But also on this decision that you made here, because we all have to go forward on one page and move on, no matter what everyone thinks, whatever decision you made, we have to unite and go forward, because it's not fair for assuming it's Ms. Allen to come in and have to deal with this. It really is not fair to new board members coming in to deal with this. This is a situation that we all created, and I say all of us, and we all need to come up with a solution to fix it before the end of this year, before I depart, and before Ms. Allen comes in, and before the new board comes in. So, my plan has been endorsed by everyone, and I'm going to assume we're going forward. It's not to be approved by the board. Based on this decision, Mr. Wessel called me last night and asked me if I could come up with some plans. And it's basically what I started doing in July with the modification. In July, I was looking for interim finance director. I believe now we need professional consultant. I did, in July, reach out to some CPA firms. I reached out to some individuals, asked if they could be the interim finance director. I can recontact those individuals, those firms. Couple of local units of government I talked to also, I'm not going to name them, to see if they'd be willing to provide consultation services to help Jared get the proper training he needs. Mr. Peacock said he has policies, procedures in place that he's willing to share with us. That's part of it. But they really do need training. And depending on how, since the motion failed, there is no other motion. The clerk is not willing to go forward without her conditions. Mr. Gallagher's plan has no financial conditions, so it does not, there does not need to be board approval. So, I assume unless there's another motion made forward, I'm going to go forward and meet with Mr. Gallagher. I'm going to ask the clerk to join us too, and if they want to participate in this plan. I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I will certainly reach out to them, because they have been helpful. You know, I don't want anyone to think the last month or so forth, they have not tried to be helpful. And Mr. Prince, you would agree with that, right?
Yeah.
So, it's not, it doesn't have to be us versus them, you know? And I think, I mentioned this, this summer one time. I'm a history buff, so I, the spring, when I was driving in my mother's car back from Florida, my goal is always to stay off I-75. And I like to take side roads. So, I ended up in Applematics in Virginia, is where the Civil War ended. And that's where Lee and Grant met and had a very cordial and a very gracious settlement agreement that brought dignity to both parties. And there's a couple quotes there that really stuck out in my mind. First one was from Abraham Lincoln in 1858, that said that a house divided cannot stand, and that's where we are now. We are a house divided. And he's right. We cannot stand this. I think you heard from employees, I think this complete agreement on the board that we're divided. We are a house divided, and we had to put an end to it. And then, on a positive note, at the end of the war, President Lincoln, President Grant, and General Lee, well, General Grant at that time, agreed... and General Lee, well, General Grant at that time, agreed to the saying that we need to appeal to the higher nature of our, to the angel nature of our, to the higher angels of our nature, I think is the term. And that's what I'm gonna ask everyone to do. No matter how you feel about this, no matter how you vote on things, we need to stay united, take the high road, get this done, provide training. One thing Jared brought out today, everyone's telling him they want him to be successful. And I heard that from the clerk's office, I heard it from everybody. I don't think anyone has told Jared they do not like him. Right, Jared? I think you're a pretty likable guy.
My face.
Yeah, not his face. He is a Minnesota Vikings fan, so we had some concerns about that, but besides that, he does come sometimes to work on the Fridays with a Viking shirt, so I did have a little talk with him about that, but...
I see he's wearing a suit.
Yeah. He probably has a Viking shirt underneath it. But in all seriousness, I think everyone, including everyone in the clerk's office, wants him to be successful. Is that, have you heard that, Jared?
Oh, no.
Okay. And to the best of my knowledge, no one has told the clerk's staff that they are not to work with them, because I've heard that rumor. And if that's the case, then I didn't know who that person is, because I have not heard that. I heard just the opposite. Everyone wants to work with them, including the clerk's office, and they should be allowed to do it. So I will schedule a meeting Monday morning with the clerks, the treasurer, Mr. Prince, and how we're gonna go forward. And the goals say we will have weekly meetings, and I'm gonna start implementing that plan Monday morning. And I will reach out to the people I talked to this summer, because being a consultant is different than being an interim finance director. And there may be interest. Will there be some costs? Obviously, I'm guessing there will be, but I don't know what those are. I don't even speculate on what those are, but I can give you an update on where we are. So I think we just need to move forward. We are very close to getting our budget done for 2022. And once again, the critical part is, the clerk's office, Jared have worked together very well to get the budget done, so it's possible. You know, doing a budget is not an easy thing. And so you look at the entire budget, I can't tell you how many times they have met, and we've had several budget meetings that have gone well, right? I mean, would you all agree? There's been no conflicts between the clerk's office and the finance director's office. They're on agreement. And I thought we had a great meeting yesterday morning on this topic, and you'll hear shortly how close we are to completing the 2022 budget.
I'd like to suggest we have a motion of endorsement of moving forward. Melinda, you have one?
I, I so move, support.
Any discussion? The motion is endorse the plan that we already presented and encourage and support the administrator going forward and making all the staff successful. All those in support of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Should we take a break before?
We should. We should. Do you have unanimous support for moving forward?
Thank you.
I just wanna know how it's doing.
You ready? We are on item two of our budget, and the administrator thinks we can be out of here about noon.
Think we're noon at five.
Oh, now you're changing your tone?
No. I just know that's contingent on the seven of you and how much you are, you think so. First of all, as I mentioned, Jared and I and Jen, we actually met yesterday, reviewed the budgets, reviewed my memo, what the issues we need to talk about, and I think we're pretty close. It would be hard to make it, no, a public event, Jen for her support. I think you and Jen and Jared have worked very well during the budget process. I can't remember how many budget meetings we've had, but there were less than last year, which is one of our goals, is try to streamline the process. We haven't had many unique requests this year. I came here early this morning and got my update done, I took a check, but one of this, the sheriff has notified that his grant for over was declined, so there's no, you don't have to worry about that matching part, which wasn't in the budget anyway, but if it did get it, you'd have to deal with that. So that's all to take away. And so you'll get more updates from me today, but... So we looked at, one issue we still need to talk about here, that we haven't talked about it, and I guess you can tell us how you wish to go forward. So items that, okay, thank you. So items that are in the budget, as you well know, are the extra merge payments, the 3.25% increase for next year. That includes everybody but the deputies, because we're in negotiations with them, and so once we have a contract, and I'm optimistic that we'll have to update that, but that's, that can happen at any time.
And Chad?
Two hundred fifty thousand.
Thank you.
And once again, every year, around December, November, sometimes we add more on top of that. So we have that plugged in there already, but we could only...
And also, then, that's on top of, is the 3% already? It's not in there yet?
We will. But once you get your final budget, it'll be...
The newly passed 3% will be...
Yeah, there is no need dialogue in that topic.
Okay.
We're planning on in May, updating all of the salaries for everybody, and we also update the revenue.
Yeah, so we're in good shape there. We did, based on discussion last, I put $50,000 for engineering fees for the HVAC. The fact that they know this meeting, and after our employee meeting, I'm meeting with previous team that work in this building to see what the goals would be to update it. The good news is, from what Mr. Richard has told me verbally, I mean, he's not, that's the plan they have, probably modified, but still he thinks the best option. That plan doesn't include using our current heat ducts, my piping, everything, but you'll get more of that, but you did have 50,000 in there.
Well, we haven't put it in yet.
But you will.
And we will update that. We need to know kind of where that money is at.
Yeah, we can take it from general or DTR, but we can talk to the treasurer. When we have our final hook rate, where you will have that result, but we will have 50,000 in there somewhere. We did improve the motor vehicle, updates, the request for building safety, webpage design, I'm just not gonna go whole thing, but everything that hasn't talked about either has been or will be updated. Couple of issues we still need to have discussion on, and I guess you can tell us how to proceed. Monday, Mr. Russell and I went to the tri-comedy judicial meeting, and they would actually be at a meeting in November to update our two county agreement, some minor changes in the agreement, but they have proposed adding one, one or two staff people. I believe Jared, you sent out the job description to everyone a couple weeks ago. The question that we have for you is, do you want, it's a half-time compliance, or it's a full-time compliance officer, and two tents, sobriety...
Here, so it's a compliance officer, a new one there, and then I think a 202 probation officer to go from 28 to...
Which is in the sobriety court. Our agreement is, we pick up 11%, natural means 18%, and the rest of the cost of our grant service. So the question is, should we put that in the budget? Do you want them to present this to the full board in another budget meeting, or do you want them to be presented at the regular November meeting? It has been approved by grant sheriffs and the county attorney.
And when I'm looking at it, it looks like it will be about $8,200.
Commissioner Allen?
That was my question, what our exposure was. Okay. And so you heard, in your opinion, is it, you heard there are reasons for...
Yeah.
It makes sense?
Yeah. And... Donald Rattler will be here next month, and I believe two of the judges will be here next month to give you more details, but it made sense. And Governor, did they actually reduce their request a couple years ago?
Yeah.
The Senator Hawkins came and they reduced that. So if you look, it's more than last year, but below where they were prior to that reduction.
Their short staff, I can tell you that.
The November two-day meeting, or...
Well, if you want them, we'll just put it in the budget.
You've moved everything to November, so I'm braising for two days.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you have a busy November ninth meeting, but for now, I'm assuming there's support to put it in the budget?
Yes.
Yes.
You don't need to hear, they're coming in November, and you need to do their updates, so I believe we need to.
Clarify for me, you said a compliance officer, meaning a probation officer?
As I understand, it's a step below a probation officer. But to make sure people are in compliance of the decoder, is that what you understand?
Yes. If the judge doesn't put somebody like on probation, but says there are things that they need to eat, maybe we will put that.
I just wanted the distinction, because I'll meet with him on Tuesday.
Oh, okay. So you'll hear it more. Yeah, and so we'll put that in the budget. Issues we have not talked about, one we can talk about today or whenever, is the senior services director day. Commissioner, Governor asked for that to be, we have some background information. You tabled a discussion on the drain commissioner day, and Darcy, I don't know if she's had, we have some information on the senior service staff. I don't know, we can ask her if she has time yet to do the drain commissioner thing. On the HVAC, you put that on November agenda.
Can I ask a question? The drain commissioner, wasn't there a $3,000 increase on that, just in the budget? Wasn't, didn't he, wasn't there an increase already?
He was asking for that much.
He was asking for it. The question is, do you want to approve it or not?
And I thought we said in discussion, well, it's already in the budget, so...
No, well, it's in the proposed budget, you have to say yes or no. He has requested.
So we're gonna discuss that.
Well, these are issues you need to discuss, okay?
Yes, yes.
The HVAC is far the biggest one, but you're not gonna get much done in 2023, I think the best thing, and you have already closed the $50,000 for fees. Let's get a plan together, let's see where we are. And I've asked Mr. Richards to come up with a cost to update the plan, but for now, I think we're good on that topic. We will have a discussion November on the healthy working of the options. There was a request, I don't think we have talked about it, it's not in the budget, is the dam authority request for $66,600?
Four.
Right, and I missed one meeting, but I don't think it was under your ten, I don't think we discussed that, yeah.
I don't think so.
Let me introduce that on you. 156, I think. It's a lot greater than...
Eighty-six or fifty-six?
What?
Sixty-six.
Was it under special?
There are a lot of things to discuss here.
156.
I sure don't wanna breeze over these.
Jared's one review of the instructions?
Yeah, a walkway...
There's a lot of issues here.
Roof of control room, $66,000 total. The walkways, security, safety issue. The roof has complete, because the roof has an uneven step that holds water.
And I think when we talked about that, we, wasn't that on the list of the insurance or safety issue?
Yes, when OSHA came here, they did not sign us for it, but it got off as a concern.
And wasn't it part of the, they had the 10-year plan of expenditures?
Yes, that was.
And that was part of that?
And I believe it's in the tab book with I plan. But I guess the question is, do you want to include it in the budget? If you will.
Yeah.
If you don't, or you want them to come in and explain?
I think since it's an OSHA issue, let's include it.
And as you remember, especially the roof, we've been talking about this for quite a few years, I kept pushing that, pushing that, pushing that.
I would, so let's, let's do it.
We would have to go out, before you spend any of that money, we'd go up with bids, and you have to prove it anyway.
Yeah. I would say included, yeah.
So, all right.
Chad, excuse me. Has an engineer looked at that? Is it, can it be replaced, or, can it be replaced or only repaired?
The walkway?
No, I'm talking about the roof.
Okay, I don't know.
He's guessing 20,000, that's just for repair.
Jerry got just a couple rough quotes.
Okay, but has an engineer looked at it?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Is that something, do we own that roof, or is that under the cove?
I believe that's our roof, as I understand.
Our roof?
Is what the dam authority members told me.
And the cove's wall or something, isn't there some joint?
The dam is partially by the cove, and then partially against the roof, obviously. Second, third, and lively.
What, as, I've been told that's our roof.
Yeah, it's a 50/50, but I believe it is, it's part of the dam, it's part of the roof.
The roof. So I think we need to, let's do the best thing for that.
What we can do, what I suggest, on the general special meeting, we put in the budget, it goes to a budget, you're gonna have to approve it anyway.
Right.
So it's not committing me to anything other than this moving the budget process along, at least, once we get the professional estimate, I repeat, get bids, at that time you can decide where to go forward or not.
And if I, I was at the meeting where all of those things were discussed and put in the 10-year plan, and if I remember right, it was based on some engineer taking a look and giving, you know, but it was a rough estimate at the time.
That was a walkway.
Now that you mention it, I think Jerry did have, Jerry just not come up with a permanent plan. But if you, if you've never been to the dam, and some of you may have not, it's really worth, Jared and I would be glad to show you the facilities. One of our new commissioners orientation, we took a bus ride and went to the dam, some of you were there, and it is quite fascinating how that works, but if you look at the roof, you'll agree it needs to be replaced. So I think everyone's saying, for now, put it in the budget.
Put it in the budget, and we'll just...
Thank you. Another issue we haven't talked about, and it's time maybe we should, the spending limit that the department has, the budget officials has, since the late 90s, anything over 2,000 has to go to the board of commissioners, so I know you spend a lot of time, but I checked in northern and southern Michigan, as far as I know, we are by far the lowest company in the amount that the department heads and the legal officials have to spend.
And we're in the best shape.
Yeah, so I'm not saying that, but I would say, we talked it all, we talked it off and on for a couple years while raising that. It's up to you, it doesn't impact the budget, but it impacts the budget rules.
Do you have any sense of what other counties have as their limit?
It varies from 5,000 to, I believe, Grand Terrace County is 100,000.
Oh, we're flunkers.
100,000 is what the administrator has found out for.
Yeah, yeah.
But for department heads, I think five is the second most, I, it was just, I analyzed during our, one of our commissioners meetings, 5,000 to 10,000 seems to be the average. We're even at 2,000 since, I believe, the late 90s.
Since that money is already, I'm so sorry. Since that money has already been budgeted, it would make sense to raise the amount that they can do, and save some of this coming to the board unnecessarily. The amount, I'm not sure how much.
No, no, you're just talking about raising how much, okay. Deb?
So I'm not opposed to raising it slightly. However, what's the threshold for like capital improvement items? Or items that we have to...
Well, I mean, if it's over 5,000, it's gonna come to you guys anyway.
Okay, so that's the, that's the benchmark, it's 5,000?
5,000.
Okay.
Anything over 5,000, let's the board do the party test as well.
Well, the thing I was concerned with is, a department head may not recognize that certain items are depreciated, and therefore just purchased and not, you know, it doesn't go through the right process, I guess.
Yeah, fortunately, I think we have very good department heads. I can't remember, I'm siding with Mr. Coleman sometimes, who sometimes just has to make a decision when things break, maybe it was caused, but I can't remember any department head that has not followed the procedures.
All the time, I've been here, maybe.
I think they're pretty good. As you know, every year, our department heads do not even spend their allocated funds.
Right.
Which is a good problem to have.
Melinda?
They speed up and to re-race that amount. Like I said, it's been, I think I was told 98 was the last time. So places have changed a little bit since nineteen ninety.
I'll make the recommendation that we increase spending limit to 5,000.
Second half, I even noticed that in the procedures manual.
Let Melinda start out, because I'd called on her before.
Currently, it's 2,000 for the department heads. I can authorize under, up to 5,000 under circumstances, and if there's an emergency situation, the district can authorize any amount. We had to do it a couple times, sewer system and so forth, but I always would have formed the board chairman person, I would have all of you know. I think two times, I had to make a quick decision on something that you can't wait to watch, but really, it's been pretty rare. So right now, it's two and five is the standard. rare. So right now, it's two and five is the standard procedure. So if you raise that for five for department heads, you probably should raise that, at least that thing to 10,000.
So we have?
Thank you. Yeah, that was one of my, one of my questions. We should look at both levels. And I'm not opposed, I was thinking slightly, is 3,000 slight, maybe? I, I guess the point I want to, the point I want to make is that what it does do is make sure that as we do purchase stuff, we are following all the right processes and all the policies. It brings it to the attention of.
That would not change, you still would get all the.
Right, for anything now over five, though. So, you know, and the other thing it does, buy those coming in front of us, is it's a constant reminder. We look at it at budget and fall, and then it's, we don't think about it again. And we're not looking at every individual thing budgeted as.
No, the checks and balances, it has to be in the budget. So let's just say, Leanna comes up with some technology need. Let's just use the wife, for example. If it's not in her budget, she'll still have to come to the board and ask for that extra funding. But if it's in your budget, she will not have to come to the board and ask for it.
So we'll, we'll miss, you know, it's on a small level, and as you said, prices have gone up.
Well, you are, you'll streamline the process a little.
And it will.
Because sometimes departments have to wait until the next budget or the next board meeting. So if something that they need on a Wednesday after a regular meeting, and Thursday have to wait a whole lot of months, which has happened.
Okay.
Probably five and 10.
So I would amend that motion to include a 10,000.
This is a budget meeting, so you don't need that. I mean, you can't, you don't need.
Just put it in there.
Well, we had a motion.
Yeah, but I'm saying you don't have to do it. This is just a budget.
I just said I would make that recommendation. I don't believe they said it was a motion.
Well, maybe I'm not hearing well down here. Why don't we, why don't we also do the, increase the administrator to 10 while we're at it?
What, I think we're talking about doing consensus.
So five and 10.
That change will be made in the budget rules, so it's ours, it's our budget. In the budget rules. When you adopt the budget, you also adopt the budget rules. But we'll make that change.
And Chad, since you have been the administrator and a good one all this time and fiscally responsible, is that, is that, is five and 10 sufficient, or do you think it should be more?
No, no, I think that's.
Okay, thank you.
The undersheriff has a question.
That still remains per item, not per the most. Because that's how it's written now. Like, if I need 20 things for 20 days, it's not, I mean, I could spend 39,000 on each item, 102 grand.
On those type of issues, usually, especially in the sheriff's department, I would sit down with undersheriff Morgan, and I would sign off. And sometimes, like, the one I think of was those body cans.
Right.
They were like 800.
Those will say per item, not per thing. But we would routinely spend 7,000, but it's for 20 things. So.
But it had to be in the budget. So you're always going, you're always going to have those type of things. And hopefully, the administrator and the local official department can come up with a conclusion. And you're going to see a bill, so if you have questions, you have the way to deal.
Some will be by a $5,000 item, only go and spend 5,000 on 20 items.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, in terms of what Jared needs to do to go forward, I think, the only thing I think I'm seeing now that I have, that we have talked about, is the two salary requests from, well, the Drain Commissioner request is from Drain Commissioner, and it's in your budget package. The Senior Services Director page, what we talked about last year, did not come up with a conclusion on that. Well, we actually did adjust it for this position because of some irreverency, but this is a request from a commissioner to have a discussion on the Senior Services Page Director. Is there anything else that's missing?
I don't know. Yeah, we can just talk about where we're once up on my.
Yeah, we can have that discussion internally. So the next up would be, I'm being optimistic here, a meeting with Miss Allen this afternoon, and hopefully, we can come up to a quick contract term. Then I will then have a meeting with our chairman vice chair to hopefully agree with that. And then, in the near future, we could have a special meeting to review the final version of the budget, not approve it, because that would happen probably in the summer of this season, but review it. And then also, there's a request from the undersheriff, Carr, which we can have a special meeting. I'm optimistic that if Ms. Allen and the chair and vice chair can agree on contract terms, and Jared will need some time. I'm sure Jim will be helpful, or Anna S. will be helpful. We'll put together the revised package along with the revised budget rule for those changes, and they've got one special meeting because we need to include the contract. Because Miss Allen, in her contract, has a 30-day allowance that she has to buy by if she gives notice. And obviously, she's not going to give notice unless, no, she has approved contract here. So there's this, I'd like to get that resolved. But I'm hopeful that, probably not next week, my goal would be, we can have a special meeting the first week of November and give you the final version of the budget, have approved contracts with the new administrator and issue, and that deal that we talked about with the, that's my goal anyway. I think we do it. Jared, do you see anything?
No, I don't think that these changes will take us very long, so we just got to move it.
No, and we did talk about working together. I'm stressed once again. Jared has looked very well at the clerk's office, especially Jim, to revise his budget. And she would have been here today, but it's her husband's birthday, and they're doing that blind walk, the new walkways. And that's what.
Skywalk.
The one?
Skywalk.
That's the one I knew her as 50.
Oh, awesome. Good for them.
Well, that's why she's not here.
Good for them.
I guess her husband's curriculums expire early when it's coming. We fully endorsed her. So I guess we'll start with the Drain Commissioner. He is requesting $3,000. Would you like him to come? And Darcy's still doing research. She simply just had not had time to research it. Or you want to spend the budget, or what would you like?
Could we, could we put those two salary adjustments on the same meeting that we have the contract for the new administrator, and then we can get our, our data together?
That's fine.
That's what I want. I want some data. So you'll get to, Chad, you'll get to, you'll get us comparables?
We have them, actually. We have some. I literally got this yesterday.
And there's a little difference in, like, the Drain Commissioner has mandated and non-mandated. So are we going to look at that? Like, so in other words, there's an increase in hours, but is it, it's not mandated? So that's a consideration?
Between the first and April, they have compared the salary here to 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 10, 11, and with the military. So anyway, we can email this to you. So I kind of like that idea, assuming we have a special meeting.
Okay, so, and I wanted that there to be a comparison with department heads here as well, not just senior services.
And how do you both ever do that?
We have.
How do you compare? I mean, we have a chart with all the department heads.
Yeah, we've got that.
So perhaps the budget, their employees, there has to be, there are some comparisons.
Okay, I guess, let them know what exactly you mean, because this is, I want you all to are in agreement here. So let me tell you what we have, okay? We have the salaries of all our department heads. April and Darcy work together, have the salary comparison of, I think, 10 colonies, the number of years that person has been in that job, and what the military rates, what the budgets are to us, senior services, commission on aging. We're the only one that has senior service, so we're still the old term commission on aging.
The problem is, I don't accept the fact that it sure seems like people within our own county, in our own building, should be, as a department head, there should be more comparable pay.
Okay, so what?
Because that's a historic field where people have been underpaid, and that doesn't mean it's appropriate.
So, so maybe, I think, picking up on what you're suggesting, maybe employees supervised, size of budget, whether or not they.
You think about internal?
Yeah, internal, yeah.
Just so, when I give this to Darcy and April.
Right. No, I'm speaking internal department directors, comparing size of budgets, number of employees that are supervised by each department head, whether or not they, their budget comes directly from the, our, our fund, or do they have to bring in additional funds and grants to support their effort, the education required for that particular position?
Yes, thank you. That's really important. And I think we need to look at the starting salary for that, that department as well. And that, and that's way, way, way too low.
I can tell you, your educational requirements are pretty minimal for a job here. They say, some say, years of experience or that.
But I think senior services doesn't say masters preferred, or didn't it, when we, I think, bachelors or masters preferred, something like that?
Melinda?
I think, I think we have to caution ourselves because if you go that route and you act on it, if you go that route and act on a salary based on those conditions, our sheriff's in for a heck of a raise. And he's probably fine with it, but if we want to go down that route, we just, I caution us to do that. I think there's other departments where department heads and elected officials may also be in for a heck of a raise. I think we need to look at your, your 10-county comparison.
And though, when you look at the starting salary for that department, the department has changed in 10 years. It has grown. That starting salary was for a very different job than it is now, and I see no reason to bring it.
That may be a different argument.
To reflect the current job.
That's a different argument.
Mr. Russell said we have a special next meeting.
I think we need to.
All that is, what information do you want?
Yeah, I want what you've got.
I want to make sure we all are on the same page, because this will create extra work to Darcy and mostly for Darcy. So I want to make sure we know exactly what you're asking for. So what we have now, you have the, this is you have, this is the pay of all our department heads, so that, I have a sheet that I think Darcy and April put together, 10 colonies, what the salary are, what their steps, their years of service of those directors, what their steps are not steps, and what their military service. Most of them are on a, so we have all that. We have those numbers.
And can you get that in package? Can you get that in package, too, not just salary? What is the package for those 10 counties? Because, well, we got retirement, we've got, as I said, a heck of a health, healthcare.
I'm saying that's going to be a lot of extra work.
Yeah, I understand that.
I just, I want to make sure I have that, do what you're asking mostly Darcy.
At least some, some just.
I don't know, when, every county has different retirement, every county has different health insurance, so it'd be really hard to.
Yeah, I see. I mean, we just look at that.
I mean, if someone called us and asked, what do we have for healthcare, we'd tell them, we're close to zero.
Well, you can tell them no cost.
Yeah, that, that.
I guess, I, I don't need the figures, but, because I want to do move on, but where do we fit in the 10 counties?
Well, you want the numbers out?
No, not, not the numbers, just where do we fall in between 10 counties?
Are we in the bottom? Are we in the middle?
No, not at the bottom. I was looking. I would say, well, here, the average of the 10 colonies, and this is from April, the average salary, 64,699. Our current pay for our senior director is 64,047. So they send this, about $500 to give over the average.
Okay.
But the colonies, this does include also Grand Terrace County, which ironically is the biggest, obviously. And their pay is lower than ours. There's just 59,220.
Could, could we, could we deal with this at the, I mean, if we, if we keep talking about it now, we might as well deal with it.
Okay.
Can you make some notes?
Yeah, I got it.
So both, if Darcy knows it, it's our next.
Okay.
So one final thing, if you look at the starting salary for that job, it's $52,000.
Yeah.
Which is 10,000 to 13,000 less than anyone else.
I think we can be patient here. I mean, that's why we got, we got an HR department, and they're going to sort this out.
You know what?
Maybe sit back here.
Just a point, I think you're looking at our old chart. The starting pay right now is 56,000, 56,000.
I'd like the new one then.
Yeah, you don't have to do one.
Oh, I'd love them to, yeah, we're going to get that?
Everything I have, you'll get by the end of date, okay?
Okay.
As well as the job description, some of that.
What else, Chad?
This is something I don't have in writing yet, but the, the judge contacted me, and when the clerk made the, when the clerk contacted legal counsel about the pay of the chief deputy clerk and what legal entitlement, then we had to make adjustments for the second in command of all elected officials, including the undersheriff. The judge claimed that her registrar was under the same legal authority, and therefore, she brought a new registrar in, that that person was entitled to the same pay as the previous registrar, and that we should not have steps. It should be exactly what previous person was paid based on the legal opinion we received, and that we should modify our pay to reflect that. I asked for legal opinion because the registrar cannot be a judge in the event of judges' office. But yesterday, we had a discussion with Don Caskey from the law firm. They're doing the research. They'll issue a brief legal opinion, but it appears that by law, the registrar has retrieved the same as the second in command of all other elected officials. So therefore, our.
This is Judge Kromkowski?
Yes. So her registrar, Chris Mathis, is entitled from 2019 to that pay at the same rate that the previous registrar was given. She is considered by law the second in command by state statute, even though she cannot take, she's not a judge, she cannot take the job, but by state statute. And we will get with state statutes and we can open it, that she is entitled to pay at the same level as the previous registrar, we should not have steps, and she's entitled to that pay just like the undersheriff was.
And her deputy clerk?
And her deputy.
Anybody else?
No, because we addressed all the elected officials, every other elected official.
So you have an opinion?
Yeah, so I was watching how this was verbally yesterday, it was pretty black and white. So the judge did her research first. I tapped them on, we called Don Caskey, they reviewed it, and verbally, they said that they agree with the judge's opinion, and the clerk said that she's hired. And you'll get all that information, so at some point, we've got to do that, Justin, but I want you to have a legal opinion first.
Good.
So if everyone's comfortable, Mr. Prince will work on revising the final budget. I understand that we blew this in December, that we said we would. So we have a better timeline. As you know, by law, as long as you have approved budget by end of the year, we're in full compliance, so there's no issues there. We will schedule a public hearing about a December meeting. We'll publish the ads as we always have done. We seldom have anyone in our public hearing, but we'll follow the legal process. And in November, at some point, once we have a contract with Ms. Allen, Jared will take the bucks, and we'll have another discussion meeting, not to approve the budget, just for you to review it one last time. Make sense? I don't have it made yet, if it's available. And that will hopefully follow up here with us. Amen. So we're there for all of us. Yeah, so I'm sure we'll have it before the November meeting.
Any questions of Chad or Jared? Thank you very much. Thank you. We are now at that part of our agenda, Mr. Kowski, when we have public comment.
Good cheers.
Is it hot? Is it very hot?
It's cooler than it was this morning. Is it water cooler or air cooler?
You're late to here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
One of the things that I, I'm not sure you know also, is that you probably don't
That's what I'm sure you know also is that you probably don't try to understand very well the function. We have various positions, like the current prosecutor and the sheriff, that are collective. They're sort of talentous organizations and even they need the term genius. And I think it's a difficult concept to understand. And that's why there are some difficulties working with all these elected positions that statute already is in either to use aside or invited commissioners or other law authority. But I think maybe that's a concept of employees, it's a tough one too. It's a tough one to understand and it seems odd and peculiar. As to the taxpayers, no doubt, they'll pay for everything. And all this is been shoveling in, and you'll always spend very little. One point that would have been, that was great. The most critical thing, our discussion about the... Three resources is that... Most critical thing, deliberately, in the process of automatic to their order, well, certainly, clerk and the administrator truly left on the process. To me, that's a breach of fair trust. And if I had been more sort of at that time, I would offer my presentation. That would have gotten all the thinking very hard of what we're trying to initiate. This is a process of initial from the beginning. Once something starts from the beginning bad, it's going to look bad all the way. And that's where we're at today. Therefore, there's one more simple thing that we need to do today. Ask the inspector to prepare an apology to the clerk and the taxpayers. And in fact, that apology can not go. I can assure you, if you're very positive results.
Thank you, Steve. Any other public comment? Any commissioner comment? Mr. Robbins?
Thank you. First, I want to start off, it's been a long, very emotional time since May twenty-one of... Or May eleventh of twenty-one. It's divided us, but I think today we came together. I first want to say, Chairman Whistler, what you did was right up there. You showed a lot of integrity in the last forty-eight hours. And I'm proud that I sat on this board with you. The next thing I want to say is, Gwen, our motions did get high. And I am going to give you apology for what happened out here the other day. Oceans were high. Hopefully, we can move on from that and do what's best for the taxpayers.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Trish?
Yes, I... I'm glad we've reached a point and moved forward. It's... I had a number of people approach me during the break and say something to the effect of everything that's happened prior to today is water under the bridge. And it made me smile and I appreciated people reaching out, that they were concerned that I wasn't going to take it that way. I do support passionately, as you all know, issues that I feel are the best action for the county. However, once a decision is made, I am a team player. Even if the outcome was contrary to what I was advocating for, so... I did, you know, with today and everyone speaking, it took me back to when I started my tenure here. And what I did was visit all the departments and the staff that were present at the time. And I asked them about their needs and their concerns. While I might not have used this forum as the point to have our chairman... Our employees meet with our chairperson, I do feel strongly that we continue to hear our employees' voices going forward and that they be encouraged to express their concerns and their need, but that they are allowed to do that in a safe environment so that they know they can come forward without recrimination and give us their thoughts. So, thanks, everybody, for passionately expressing your opinions today. And I'm looking forward to moving on.
Any other commissioner comments? Motion, yes. Commissioner Leonard?
I just, we've heard, it was rumored or mentioned today, there's been lots of rumors and we've heard lots of numbers thrown out of what... Of the cost of the two new departments. And I've been through the budget and what I come up with is a hundred and seventy-six thousand. And that includes the salaries and the... And the Blue Cross insurance. So, I mean, that's where I'm at. So, I just... I mean, if it's different, I'd like to know. We've heard some outrageous numbers and I'd like to know what I've missed. But that's what I see the cost is. And I want to say I don't take that lightly. It's... It's an important thing for us to know. So, thank you.
Can you get that, Jared?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Move to adjourn.
You're adjourned.